And it is now 6:04 PM. I will call to order this meeting of the school committee of October 26, 2021. And our agenda for today is we will first of all have communications from the school committee and the administration, followed by the student representatives' report, and then public comment. Reports and discussion items, including the FY22 budget update and projection, the FY22 personnel and hiring update, then we will have action items, the consideration of grants from WIFI totaling $19,948, consideration of acceptance of donation from the Massachusetts Elks Association, and consideration of approval of minutes from June 10th, July 12th, and September 29th minutes. Then we will have the chair report, the superintendent report, future agenda items, including future agenda items. Next meetings, we will have an executive session and then adjournment. With that, we will begin with communications or announcements from the school committee and the administration. And first of all, we just want to say a big congratulations to Madame Anderson of the Winchester High School for winning the educator of the year by the American Association of Teachers of French. And this was for her enthusiastic French teaching and her promotion of the Francophone culture in the classroom and also beyond. And it's also the third time that the Winchester High School World Language Department has received this award. So congratulations, felicitacion. And also, we had a meeting of the policy subcommittee yesterday. We will provide a memo at the next meeting. And we reviewed items such as the Winchester Public School use of social media, the use of the logo, our logo, and the district name and image, handbook and policy, and our policy manual alignment on bullying and dress code. And then I guess if you have any interest in any of these, please feel free to reach out to me if it's something that sparks your interest. We also had the curriculum subcommittee meeting last October 20th. And Ms. Bergstrom, do you have any highlights?
Sure. The two topics that the curriculum subcommittee heard from educators on this month were about a service learning update. So we heard from our elementary, middle, and high school educators on how they are integrating service learning into their classrooms and curriculums, and how they are exploring new ideas to sort of expand the service learning through the K-12 schools. We also heard from a small group of educators who have been diligently working on practices on equity and grading. And so they have been running their own professional learning community through the, under Dr. Ellen Emma, and learning about equity and grading and trying out some of the practices in their classroom. And both groups of educators, I have to say, were incredibly enthusiastic, incredibly dedicated to their work. And it's always nice to see some of the new ideas that are being tried out in our district. And we just were really impressed with their work and their energy around both of these topics.
Thank you. Next, we have a save the date, November 16th, for the Lynch Project kickoff. It will begin at 9:00 AM in the Town Hall Auditorium, and over the course of the day at some locations to be determined. And then at 7:00 PM in the Winchester High School Auditorium. We will hear from the team. It will be a chance for Winchester residents to engage with the team around the Lynch Project and the administration, and it will be recorded. A few other events in the community that we have with some of our community partners include the Network for Social Justice will be hosting an event on October 27th on demystifying affordable housing from 7:30. And the Coalition will be hosting Katie Greer for Kids, Teens, and Technology, also on October 27th at 7:00 PM. Parent Parent will be having Raising an Organized Child on November 4th. And last announcement is our athletic director, Mark Oria, was proud to bring three students to the MIAA Student Ambassadors, which was a meeting of student leaders from 35 schools. And the Winchester High School students who participated in this were seniors Maggie Fortin and Liam Doherty and junior Amanda Harrison. So thank you very much, all. Next on the agenda, we have, oh, Dr. Hackett, do you have any announcements?
No, actually, no, that was a lot of announcements.
I told you.
Just, just to let you know that we did receive word from the commissioner today that masking, mandatory masking, will continue through January 15th, which is a Saturday, so I'm not quite sure why Saturday, but it will continue through Saturday, January 15th. At that time, will be revisited by the department. So just a, just a hot-off-the-press news item that came in today, just to let you know. Other than that, I do not have any other announcements.
Thank you. Next up, we have our student report with our student representatives, Elle O'Connor and Charlie Savage. Welcome.
All right. Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for having us in this lovely weather. We're very happy to join you again this week, and we'll have Elle just dive right into it.
So to get us started, we would like to update you all on some very exciting events the high school is coming up. As you all know, the Spirit Fair is quickly approaching. It is scheduled for Saturday, November 20th, and will be held from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This is a great opportunity for clubs, teams, and other organizations to sell their merchandise and raise money for their programs. We also want to remind you that the NHS Talent Show is scheduled for November 23rd. Many things are still up in the air right now in terms of scheduling, but this event would definitely be in person. The Student Council is also preparing for the Spirit Half Week, which will be from November 22nd to the 24th, and it will include competitions between grades and themed daily dress-ups. Starting next week, the Student Council will also be selling pies. You can buy pumpkin, blueberry, apple, and all of your fall favorites from Lawson Farms. So you can be on the lookout for the form to purchase a pie in the morning announcements starting next week. You can also purchase a pie and donate it to Anka Pantry. We want to thank Carol Kitchens, who will be delivering all of these pies. Students also have Picture Day next Monday, November 1st, and the Makeup Day is scheduled for December 7th. Next students, next Tuesday, students also have off from school for the Professional Development Day. And the end of the quarter is also coming up. Due to the upcoming Professional Development Day and Picture Day, there will be a quarter extension. This will be for grades nine through 11 only, as 12th graders need their grades updated for early decision applications. The quarter will be extended to November 8th instead of its original date of November 5th. Teachers, however, do not have to extend the quarter if they choose not to do so, but it will give students a little more time so that major assessments aren't on the last day of the quarter. And we also want to again highlight how helpful the double WIM blocks are in our rotating schedule. Many students use this time to meet for clubs, go to college visits, get ahead on schoolwork, work on group projects, and just relax. I especially love the WIM block days. Some days I like to be like super productive and get a lot of work done, and other days I get to meet with clubs. So for example, today, the Best Buddies Clubs met, and we got to paint pumpkins for Halloween. And unfortunately, some students have been signing up for WIM blocks as a way to leave school early, so some locations, including the cafeteria, are now closed as a place to go during the WIM blocks. The admin is currently working on a better system to prevent this. Admin will also be sending out a survey to all students soon to get some feedback on how WIM block is going.
All right. Moving on to sports, the boys' football team and the cheer team had their successful senior night last Friday. Although the football team unfortunately did not come out with the win, it was still a ton of fun, and the crowds were very lively. The girls' soccer team have their senior night coming up this week, which is sure to draw some fans if they have done really well this season. We're also happy to announce that we have a few league championships this year, including the swim team, which went undefeated, and the golf team. And right now, both girls' soccer and field hockey have a chance to win their respective titles in the league championship. On the topic of awards, as you guys mentioned, we are also very happy to announce Madame Anderson's award from the American Association of Teachers of French, and everybody was very excited to congratulate her when that was announced. And moving on to the focus tonight, clubs. Marle UN is attending three national conferences this spring that members will be encouraged to go to. Being one of the largest clubs in the school, they have taken following COVID guidelines very seriously, and have been successfully meeting in person, which really brings the group morale and vibe to the level that has been reached in previous in-person years. I would also say that this is the case with other large clubs, such as Spectrum and the Fall Club, which, the Fellas Club, sorry, which have resumed their meetings full-time.
And we would all just like to say thank you for having us here, and we will now open up to any questions, if you have any.
I've got one.
Mr. Nixon.
So I think, welcome. I think the last time you were with us, we were approaching the PSAT administration. So far as you know, how did it go?
Um, I felt like it was pretty fine.
Yeah, it was definitely, personally, I hadn't taken a PSAT before, so going into it kind of blind was tough, but that's what's recommended, I believe, just so you can get a sense of the test. We saw a huge turnout, a lot of the junior grade was there, which is what I think the PSAT administration was really aiming for. And I'd say it went very well.
Good.
Yeah. We also had some sophomores in attendance as well.
Yeah. But you felt like the team was prepared, the building was ready for you, spaces were all set for you.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, we were able to get into the rooms very quickly, quicker than last time I took my SATs.
Thank you.
Anybody else today? Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much, as always. We appreciate your time and the information that you bring us. So, and if you'd like to stay, please do so.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you for bringing the energy. That was really helpful.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Rainy Tuesday.
Bye.
Have a good one.
Good night.
See you later. Okay. And next, we will move into public comment. Public comment shall be for a period of 20 minutes and is not a discussion, a debate, or a dialogue between individuals and the committee. It is a citizen's opportunity to express their opinion on issues on the agenda or of school committee business. Any individual wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address, and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. And all individuals shall speak to the full committee through the chair and shall not address individual members or administrators. We offer in-person comment, and please sign in on the clipboard outside the room. And we also offer remote public comment with registration typically 24 hours in advance. And we ask that for our remote participants, please turn on your cameras and give your names and addresses consistent with our in-person process. Do you, do we have any?
Nobody.
We have nobody for in-person.
Grave to the rain.
A rainy day, yes. And Dr. Hackett, do we have anybody for?
We have one person who had signed up through the registration portal prior to the meeting, and is Jennifer Infantino.
Infantino, yeah.
So Jennifer, Jennifer, you are, if you can hear me, you are unmuted?
Great. Thank you very much. This is Jennifer Infantino. I'm at 3 McCall Road in Winchester.
Ms. Infantino, if you could turn on your camera?
Joining for public comment as?
Ms. Infantino, if you could?
Chair of the Winchester Special Education Parent Advisory Council, which is WINPAC.
Ms. Infantino, if you could please turn on your video?
Oh, I didn't realize that was an option. Hold on one second.
Sure.
Do we have the volume up?
I'm just not sure where to do that.
You should have an option to turn your video on.
At the bottom left?
On the bottom left, I just see the audio.
You do, okay. Yeah, I might have to do it then. Hold on just a second, I'm sorry.
Thanks for your patience. No matter how many times we do this, it seems like the first time all over here.
Just wanted to make everyone aware of an upcoming event, so I'm not sure that my face will add much to that.
Did you just let her know it was hard to hear her when she started? If she could start?
Yeah, if it was hard to hear you, no fault of your own, but if you could just repeat who you are and your introductory comments, and then I'll still fumble around here and see if I can find a way to turn your video on.
Okay, great. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. This is Jennifer Infantino with 3 McCall Road, and I am joining as a board member of the Winchester Special Education Parent Advisory Council, which is WINPAC. And I wanted to make everyone aware of an upcoming event that we have scheduled for Wednesday, November 10th, at 7:00 PM. It's a Zoom webinar with Angela Malloy, who's beyond Booksmart, and she's going to be talking about executive functioning.
Nope, she's still. You are muted, if you could. There you go. Whoops. One more time.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
Perfect. And are you able to share, turn on video now?
Let's see. Start video.
All right.
Yay!
That was all me, that was all me trying to work through it. Sorry about that.
Very well done. Let me know if you can't hear. I just wanted people to know about this upcoming event that WINPAC is hosting on executive functioning and how parents can better understand executive function skills and their development. And she'll give some tips and tricks to better help students navigate executive function challenges and improve their independence and reduce friction. There's, the webinar links are available through our Facebook page, and if this, I don't know if anybody can see this, but I could share the link here as well if anyone is interested.
Thank you.
Okay.
November 10th, 7:00 PM.
Yep.
November 10th.
November 10th, 7:00 PM?
That's correct, a Zoom webinar, yep.
And Ms. Infantino, is that address also on the WINPAC website?
The link to register is on the WINPAC Facebook page, and it's been posted to all of the different school newsletters, so it'll be there. And you can also reach out to the WINPAC email, and we can get you guys registered.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for bringing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for bearing with our technology.
No, thanks for bearing with me trying to make the technology work. It was user error. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
All right. Take care.
Okay, that's it.
That's it.
Or pre-registered, yep.
Okay. All righty. Now, let me just see. We will move into reports and discussion items, but if the committee is willing, I would like to move a few of our action items up, and one of them being on the WIFI grant, since we have Karen Connolly here to present some WIFI grants to us. And the grants are totaling $19,948. So Ms. Connolly, if you would like to join us, we welcome. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess, do we have contenders?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
I wasn't giving you a chance to think about that. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I know you always have so much to do. We are excited to present nearly $20,000 tonight. This represents what I would say is our first normal grant cycle in more than 20 months. It was smaller than we've seen before, but that's not too surprising. I think teachers are really just kind of getting themselves back in the groove. I would highlight for your attention, one of the grants, the largest one, which is up to $9,600, called Let's Play. Your speech-language pathologists, all of them collaborated to come up with this, and it's to purchase signage, which we will put at all of the playgrounds that use Chora language. So for children that can't communicate or whose verbal communication skills are difficult. I think it's a really great idea, and honestly, we're delighted to do it. And we expanded it from their original proposal and said, give it a shot and do it at all of them. This will roll out, because it's going to take a little while to get those signs up. The signs will look different at each school, depending upon the layout of the playground, but I think that's a very exciting grant. We continue to be interested in technology, and we were delighted to fund two mobile media labs that are going to be at Ambrose and Vincent Owen to help students who make videos. I was up there the other day, and it's really fun to see how excited the kids are with that and how facile they are. This will make it a little bit easier. Right now, it's set up with a little bit of masking tape and glue, and it isn't quite as professional. This will give the students the opportunity to do something that is actually quite well thought out. And then finally, I would just highlight, because we love this grant so much, Jared Huber, who runs the high school post-grad program, came to us with a very, very well-thought-out proposal that involves everything from students having to think through what they would need to do to apply for jobs, to researching what kind of clothes they want to wear, how much that would cost, how are they going to get to a place to buy them. It was just very, very well thought out, and I think it'll probably unfold over most of the year before the students actually purchase their final outfits, which they will be allowed to keep. So we thought that was a great grant, and I would be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Hoppert?
Yes, sir.
So, well, first of all, thank you so much. This is, this is really, really wonderful for all the support, and particularly for, you know, well, they're all very interesting, but I happen to love technology, and so I find that great to see the students having the tools to be able to do that sort of stuff. I was curious, just to educate me, because I'm a bit newer on the committee, how does, how does this work when you think about, you know, different grants being given to different schools and things? Is there a calculus that, that, you know, spreads it around? Or just, you know, or certain needs at certain schools? Or I was just curious how?
So it's an interesting question. And the first thing we always say when people ask that is we can only make grants based on requests we receive. And so some years, we will hear more from one school than another. If we see a grant, like the playground signage that we think belongs at all of the schools, we'll reach back to the grant writer and say, hey, you know, you want to include everybody else? We think that would be a great idea. Sometimes we find that different schools, so for instance, the Media Lab is a great example of that. Diane Pierce, who works at Ambrose and VO, is very good at this and very into it, and she wrote the grant. The other ITS weren't interested right now, or at least it wasn't at the top of their bucket list. And so what we told Diane was, please provide professional development to your colleagues, and if they're interested in coming back to us, yes. You know, I mean, once we give a grant like that at one school, if people come back from the other school, we will in fact do it. So the example of the sensory motor pathway, we had funded that at Lynch and at the original, at Lynch and also at?
Ambrose?
Ambrose. Ambrose, yes. VO paid for their own. So when the folks from the preschool came to us, we had already established the principle that that was something we supported. And so for fairness sake, we would, we would fund it. Sometimes if schools get a very large grant, so for instance, one year Lincoln got $10,000 towards flexible seating. I think at that point, educators feel like, whoa, we got a lot this year. Maybe we're not going to ask so much. I mean, we often find educators are very careful in what they ask for. So hopefully that answers, answers your question.
Yeah, it, it sounds like you, you kind of eyeball it, you know, over, over time to, you know, some things, I guess, may roll out at one school as a pilot, and either they're very interesting and other schools catch on, or, or maybe it's not, and, and no one else wants to do it. But, but all in all, you're keeping an eye across the district.
Yeah, because I mean, I think we do have, and sometimes we have grants committee members who are just like, fund it for everybody. We've got to write the check. And, you know, what I've learned over many years is that if educators don't request it and they're not invested in it, it's a waste of time and money to provide it. If they don't want it, then it's not ours to shove it down their throat. We've done that. We tried that with things, and it didn't work out so well. And so I think what we found is it's better to let it go from educator to educator. And so when they see it working in somebody else's classroom or in somebody else's school, that might get someone invested, and then they would come back to us and say, hey, you know, I like that. Can I do that, too? And that's, that's been helpful. You know, I think that, that works for us.
It sounds like a smart approach, so I appreciate that. It sounds like a smart approach, so, so I appreciate that. And, and just, just also with that eye towards, you know, hypothetically, it's possible you have a school where the educators, you know, don't know to ask or don't, don't, need a nudge, you know, like if, so if over time, one school, you know, seemed like they were never getting grants or getting fewer, but it sounds like you, that's not the case. So it sounds like a really smart approach to use your limited funds well. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Just a quick thank you. I, I always appreciate how thoughtful your board is and how well you work with both the administration and the educators to try out new things and to get people what they need. I noticed the Let's Play on here is a conversation the CPAC has been having as well, as something that they were interested in supporting, too. So it's neat to see ideas bubbling up from different places within the community, and that's when you know you're really hitting on something that people want and see a need for, and it just helps us be an inclusive community, too. So I really appreciate seeing all kinds of grants across here, both to support teachers, to support technology, to support inclusive needs. It's just nice to see the variety, too.
Well, thank you. And the teachers you referenced that you heard from the curriculum subcommittee, we have actually met with both those groups, and I anticipate grant requests coming from them to support what they're trying to do, because like you, I was very impressed with their presentation, and I think there's a lot there. So that's something, especially right now, that the folks that are working on the standards-based grading, equity in grading, I think will be coming back to us probably in the next few months. So we were interested in that, in that, too. So, yeah. And then one other reminder, for those of you that would be excited about this, Author Fest is Thursday and Friday. It is virtual again, and it is for the elementary students. We've determined that Author Fest at the middle and high school is going to be best served going forward with some sort of a residency program, or something similar to what Lexington does, and we're working with Carolyn Plaski on that. So this year, it is just at the elementary, but last year, amazingly, the kids connected so well with the authors on Zoom. We have several new authors coming, so I think it will be great. So if anybody would be interested, just drop me an email and I'll send you all of the links, because every, every library media specialist is running it, and it will be on Thursday and Friday, pretty much all day, four presentations a day.
Of this week?
Yes.
Okay.
The 28th and the 29th. And Bookends is again celebrating by offering the authors' books and selling them online and giving us a percentage.
Great. Could you just give us a sense of how many applicants there were for this round of grants, and then how many you were able to fund?
We were able economically to fund all of them. We turned down a few grants, some because we didn't feel like they were quite ready, and we've asked those folks to reconsider, and some because we felt like it was beyond the can of what WIFI should be doing. You know, so sometimes we do have that, when we will say, "It's a great idea. We don't disagree with you," but we'd like our money to be seed funding for something. And so for instance, there, there will be grants that we won't fund multiple times, and we'll say, "You have to find money in the school budget," and sometimes we will say that to grant applicants before we make it. You know, you understand, this is a one-year grant, and this is a very expensive, for instance, subscription. So we run into that a lot. The teachers would love to get subscriptions that are ongoing, and, you know, it's again a mistake we've made in the past, that after we made a commitment, we didn't realize we were obligating the district going forward. So we try not to do that, because that isn't helpful.
No, thank, thank you for that, and thank you, thank you for all your work on behalf of the schools.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Karen, for coming tonight. I wanted to learn a little more about the core language boards. Are these, as you understand them, are the, would these maybe be mounted to the play structures that are already there, so we're not talking about digging holes in the ground, or?
Actually, actually, Chris, but not at Lynch. I know where you're going. That's one reason why everything is going to be different at every school. So at Lynch, because we know that's going to be rebuilt, we're going to have a different type of signage. There, I believe, it's going to be the A-frame signs that will physically be brought in and out of the building. At some of the schools, we will be mounting, we will not, but DPW will be mounting them, and God-lover Cindy Harrington has already been working with DPW on that, and all of the principals have identified where they would want that signage to be.
Okay.
And then at other schools, it will be banners, so the kind of banners that are attached to the, to the fence.
Got it. That sounds really exciting, and thank you for, you know, making that available to, to all the schools. I'm assuming we're, Parkhurst is out of that, given that this is sort of a temporary sort of location, as we understand it. And then a question, well, a comment, and then actually a question maybe for Dr. Ellen Emma. On the PD grant, this was a really interesting conference that I was looking up the details. Much of this is scheduled later in the day, so my first reaction when I saw 10 teachers were going, that's a full school week, so I was just concerned about what impact does that have in the classroom for that length of time. A lot of it is in the evening, but many, on many days, it does start at 11:00 AM. So I, just a question to administration, do we sort of have a plan for, for coverage if we're going to lose up to 10 social studies teachers, because it's, they're not like sprinkled throughout the curriculum. It's specific to social studies. I presume you have a plan for sort of continuity of what's going on in the classroom. That's a long time.
Yeah, so Chris Karhayats coordinated this, who's super mindful, as directors, they themselves, especially these days, are covering when people are out in their own areas. So he's worked it out so that there's a clear plan to, I don't know the details of it, but there's a plan for that.
There are also a number of those, Chris, can be, a number of the sessions can be accessed after they're live, and when, because that was the very question we asked Chris Karhayats, and his expectation is the teachers will access some of those things on their own time. I don't know, we funded it up to 10 teachers. He may not end up having 10 that go as well.
Well, and many of these sessions go till 10 o'clock at night, so we're going to have some busy teachers between classroom duties and then going to the conference virtually, so it, it looks pretty exciting. Thank you very much. Always appreciate this.
Okay, so again, just to echo everybody else, thank you so much, again, to you and then to all of WIFI. We just really appreciate your support for the different programs in the district, and I personally appreciate how the grants that you've chosen to, that you've selected to present to us, cover so many of the grade levels within the district, and I'm also particularly interested in the post-grad program grant that you, that you had awarded. So thank you so much for all of your support.
The, the thanks go to the teachers who write these grants and the Winchester families that donate to us to allow us to fund them, and the businesses, because there are many small businesses in Winchester. For instance, the Winchester Cooperative Bank is providing significant funding for Author Fest, so we definitely thank them all.
Thank you.
All good?
Thank you.
Happy to make a motion.
All right. Thank you very much.
Oh, yes.
Yes, we do need a motion. Stick around for the main event. So I move to accept as gifts to schools' professional development and education grants from the Winchester Foundation for Educational Excellence, in the total amount of $19,948, as presented by Ms. Connolly.
All in favor?
Excellent. Thank you. I've honestly never had a school committee say no to the money, though.
Perhaps it would be, I, I would be a big, but I didn't think there was a no there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Karen, I will be at Lynch on Thursday checking out the Bee Garden.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will now move into reports and discussion items, beginning with a finance update by Mr. Peter Rowe, our interim finance director.
Before Mr. Rowe starts, I just wanted to let you know that we did launch a district Twitter page. It's @wpsedu. I've found some of you along the way and have followed you, but the intent of this is just happy smiling faces and really kind of show an instruction in what we're doing in the classroom. This particular picture was at Ambrose, when the administrative team visited, did some classroom walkthroughs, and this class was working on owl pellets, and they were, they were into it. It was really, really exciting and fun to watch, so.
Kids like finding some good mouse skeletons.
But, oh, yeah, and we, yeah, quite a long explanation by one young man to me is what was going on. It was helpful. So, Mr. Rowe, with that.
Thank you very much. And I want to just introduce this by saying that this is really the first, generally I call it a first-quarter report. It's really the first projection. Normally, in the cycle of the school system, by the time we get to the middle of October, depending on the process, we've had enough payrolls run and really a sense of the organization in terms of staff in place, where it gives us an opportunity to do projections that are fairly sound, so. So what we'll show tonight is the general fund budget of Winchester Public Schools, based on the appropriation that was approved at town meeting last spring, and we'll give additional updates. So the focus, where we really have the actual projection, as I'm calling it, with a good sense of staff in positions, as well as a couple of vacancies that we factored in, that we know we're in the process of filling. In addition to this, we'll come back in a couple of weeks with more information on our non-salary accounts, so that's really the context that we want to do this in. And then this obviously is going to lead right into FY23's budget development, which is, believe it or not, already being talked about. So we're, this is just the way the cycles work. So the, the total general fund appropriation for this year is slightly over $58 million. We break it into two big buckets, the biggest one being personnel services, that were budgeted at $50,687,000, and then other expenses at $7.4 million. When we look at our projection based on the October 14th payroll, we're projected to spend just under $50.5 million, $50,459,000, and that's a variance between budget and actual of about $228,000, meaning we have that amount of flexibility. And I use that word gently, because it's a little under half a percent, so it's a very small number. And, as I said, we're carrying our other expenses at budget, so that the total projection is really at that number, about a $228,000 gap. The slide doesn't really tell you a whole lot, because the numbers are so small, but I don't want us to get lost in the numbers. But if we think about the bottom line here, the two key items are the 228 I just mentioned. The other thing is looking, I, I think, at personnel within each cost center. This lists the cost centers, which are school-focused primarily, with the exception of special education, athletics, technology, pupil services, and then central administration. And some of those appropriations are, if you will, arbitrary. We've had some conversations about, you know, why do we carry school-based substitutes in the central budget, things like that, you know, so that as we move forward, we'll have a lot of conversation about, are there other ways to present this? But this is the structure of our budget, as we've, as the school system has experienced it for a number of years. And what we show is 630.9 full-time equivalent staff in place or budgeted vacancies that we're in the process of filling at the moment. I want to put an asterisk beside the number that I carry, which is also the FTE-budgeted. I saw a number of sets of numbers, which was the budget plan, and I do think in a couple of cases, there may be a gap, so that I'm not sure that the 630 actuals is really the, about 14.5 difference from what was planned, meaning what was budgeted last spring, but the number was, I think, somewhere lower than the actual 630. What we know is, we've added some positions in certain areas. A key one is our nursing staff is, is higher, and then, and there were some other clearly budgeted positions as, as the school committee voted the budget. So generally speaking, there was growth from the plan to our actual now that we're showing. I'll go on to the next, you know. So this really is a summary of that. The, the 630, the areas where we saw the most growth were, the high school's about 2.8 positions over what I find carried in the original budget, special ed, and, and those are primarily teaching, I actually think there's a dean position there, and I don't know whether that was budgeted, but I think it was, so maybe there's things that were being planned and budgeted, but anyway, the data I found didn't include it. There was a, but there was a planned, if you will, dean position there. Same thing in special education. There was some growth in there, but those are primarily our educational.
Assistance, ESPs.
Right. Educational, special, assistance. In pupil services, as I said before, two and a half of those positions are nursing positions, and then other positions around the, the budget are sprinkled in, in different areas. And so, just to go back for a moment, what I find as budgeted may actually turn out to be last year's actual, but in any event, this frames, I think, for you, the, the way we've been able to manage the budget, fit all the priority decisions that were put into the actual, manage to, to staff the pressures that were seen and identified at the high school, in special ed, in pupil services, and others, and still come in within the total personnel budget. So I think that's important to understand. Next slide. So as I was saying before, we, you know, school systems really do establish a pattern very early on, as long as you, as long as you're staffing up, and so there generally is not going to be significant change, unless there was something that was happening to push us into more classrooms, or there was an influx, a large influx of students. I, I don't think that's what's going to happen this year. The only unusual pattern I can imagine is something that would have to do with illnesses driven by a resurgence of COVID, where we face either medical leaves or those kinds of activities. So my own take on this, and I obviously haven't been here a long time, is that this is probably going to be sufficient to cover the staff we have in place and, and the, if you will, the, the structure of how the organization works. I know that a number of times when, when staff are out, if we look at our, for instance, our substitute budget, they seem to be adequately put together. I think sometimes classes are covered by the assistants that are in the classes, so that there's, there's an ability to cover some of that behavior if it were to happen. But so far this year, at least, we've, I think we've been fairly stable, so that's very good. In, in the other expenses of the non-salary accounts, we'll be looking at those in depth as we go really through the next couple of weeks, but the preliminary data shows on our, at least on our regular education, both our costs and our revenues are down. The revenue's down partly because we have fewer students paying to be transported. We're also in a position where a bus company can't get drivers, and while they're going through a process of training, which will give them the ability to have a couple of buses back, we'll have to see how that affects us. The, the shortage is mainly in the afternoon for the after-school drop-off. The, we have sufficient vehicles for the pickups in the morning, but we're struggling in terms of the after-school, and there are certain areas where children aren't being delivered to the preferred address that parents would like. Our special ed tuition costs are up, and we're trying to identify both the, the cause and the, what we think that number's going to be, but it certainly seems that it relates to some of the gaps that have happened, and kids being out of school, certainly for the, for the good piece of the last year, so it's really increasing that, that student count. Remember, the important thing that I think we do want to remember on special tuitions is it's funded from multiple accounts, so that the general fund appropriation is really less than half of the funding. We, we have significant appropriation from circuit breaker funding, which is the money that we get for high-cost students. It's a direct reimbursement for the state, and we have last year's funds, really a year's worth of funds from, that were in the bank as we closed '21, budgeted to fund that, as well as we use the federal IDEA, we call it the 240 grant, but it's the individual's disability funding. it the 240 grant, but it's the Individuals Disability Funding from the, from the federal government. And so those, those three sources, initial indications are that they're not going to be adequate for what we're seeing, so we're going to have to look for some other supplementary funding. What we do know is that we have ESAR funding and ARPA funding. Those are intended to be multi-year accounts. You certainly don't want to have to patch your way through one year with big pieces of any of those. You know, we want to find a way to break off, if we, if we have to dip in other accounts, how should we structure something to support that, so that we have those, those resources we need to look at? I'll show you a graph of the ESAR in just a minute. And then additionally, in Special Education, we have professional and contracted services that are up due to leaves of absence that we've experienced with some of our specialists, where those are just positions. It's hard to fill on a short-term basis, we've had the contract for that, and that's expensive, as well as compensatory services and, and the demand for that. So it's going to take a little more work to understand exactly where we're going with that, but that's where the pressure is primarily for this year. So we'll be back to you in two weeks to talk some more about that. And I apologize for the size of this, but the, these are the three ESAR grants that we've received. The one on the far left for $95,000, 95 or 93, 95, is primarily funding a cleaning contract, cleaning and sanitizing supplies and services to supplement our custodial staff this year. So that's fully appropriated to that, and partly in that project, that cleaning is supplemented by funds from our Building Revolving Fund. The second grant, the ESAR II for $348,000, is targeted across a range of items, some mental health supports, tuition to collaboratives, tuition to non-public schools, and again, some more sanitation. That grant has not, that's, the budget is submitted to the state. Those funds haven't been expended. And so, we could amend or make modifications to that grant as we see fit, and the spending goes through, I believe, the end of '23 on that grant.
Yep.
And then ESAR III, which was funded, was targeted to, for some learning losses, it's called, some tuition collaboratives, non-public schools, and $130,000 for the HVAC replacement at the McCall Middle School. Again, none of that has, has been expended, although the, as you see, the plan is there. And again, that funding, we're allowed to go through FY24. So you're going to see that these give us some opportunity and flexibility in the budgets, and we want to try and make sure that we keep that flexibility for a couple of years too, as we, as we think about spending. So I won't do enrollment. So...
Can I ask a quick clarification up here?
Yeah, no, I was going to say...
On this slide?
Yes.
Quick clarification. So the, the value there at the bottom in bold, of course, the numbers above add up to that. So is this the amount that we know we're getting from one, two, and three, and that's how our understanding is it would be spent? Or that's just simply totaling up our present-day assumption around allowances? In other words, is there more money coming in two or three? I know one was going to be around $95,000. That's what you show.
No, we, we received a, a state notice of federal appropriation, if you will, of these amounts, and we have submitted the grants.
Okay.
They're under review, they haven't been formally approved for us yet.
And so three, for instance, was fairly recent, but, but we know that three is going to be limited to 760 and change, right?
Correct.
Yeah. I just, that's all I wanted to be clear about.
Yep, those are the actual allocations.
Yep, thank you.
Sure. But we could go back to any of these points, and I'm glad to answer any questions. I apologize for racing through it if I did.
I would just add, if I could, that as Mr. Rowan and Dr. I have been working through the projections on tuition costs, and where we kind of are right now is, we think, in and around the range of about $700,000, short of what's been budgeted for. So within the operating budget, within IDEA that we knew we were going to receive, and within our circuit breaker funding, including, I think, some IDEA carryover as well.
Correct, yeah.
So that is the number that we're really trying to nail down. I offer you that number now, saying it's preliminary. We feel, I believe, very good, have been spending a lot of time going through, making sure that we have, not only we're capturing everybody, but also anticipating possibilities as well. So as you can see, we do have the availability of ESAR II and III to cover some of that cost, if in fact, that's what we need to do. But we are also having conversations with the town around opera funding. This will be one of the discussions we're going to have with the town. Clearly, the, the advantage of ESAR II and III is that it is multi-year, and it would, it would not put us in a good position to expend all these funds this fiscal year. And then, as we go into next fiscal year in FY23, kind of trying to anticipate how many of those tuitions are going to stay? Do we have some tuitions falling off? Because that would be a big chunk of money to pull back into our operating budget, which we would need to do, because these are one-time funds, right? So, so on the ninth, I think we'll have as, as good a projection as we can have on those numbers, and that's why we just want to come back to you again at that date, so that we can continue to really nail down those, those estimates.
I have a couple of other questions.
Mr. Nixon.
So have we received invoices yet from North Suburban for Yellow Bus?
Yes.
We have. Are they invoicing us only for the buses that are rolling? Or are they invoicing us for buses that we were expecting that we don't have yet?
No, they're only invoicing us for buses that are rolling.
Okay. So then, like, on the transportation line, where we had a budgeted amount, that we might see some adjustment there as we go into the year, right?
Right, right. Because, for instance, the plan had been six buses in the morning, eight in the afternoon, and currently we only have six both sides.
Okay.
So that, and that's why I say the, really the fine-tuning of the, both the budget will be down, the cost, if you will, the invoices.
Yep.
But the revenue in the revolving fund that supports some of that spending...
Sure.
...will also be down.
Sure.
So, you know, the question is, will it offset?
And then my, my other question, with totally different track here. So typically, we carry our pre-K expenses, I think substantially under the sped line. And we've talked to Pam about this before. That was easy, because it was all kind of co-located at Lynch, right? And then we pull out some of it, and we send it to VO. The nice thing about VO is they have a nurse. But now they're out of Lynch, and they're here. So as I was flipping through the report, it just wasn't clear to me, where, like, where do we track the nurse costs that we have here, or any other costs that are associated with that? If you know the answer, that's fine, you can tell me now. But I'm asking, because I'm actually realizing that, you know, the, the situation we have right now is going to be largely in place until the fall of '25, when Lynch opens. And so I'm just thinking about how we communicate our budget expectations, our actual expenses, because, you know, FinCom reads this, FinCom, you know, a town meeting has questions. So just thinking about how we talk about cost centers when they are, like, physically no longer there, meaning at Lynch for a period of time, is maybe something we should think about, you know, in the reporting structure. But you may know exactly where the nurse is, I just couldn't find it.
Yeah, well, the, I do know that the preschool nurse is in this number. But you raise a very good point, which is, it may not be appropriate to, you know, for the long term, to carry it there. We may want to rethink how we present preschool.
Right. But in other words, in the munis run, do we know where that extra nurse is?
Yes, it's in the pupil services with the other nurses.
Pupil services, okay, very good.
So on the, you'll find it on the, on the pupil services.
Okay.
It's one of those that led to the growth this year.
Yep. Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Brady.
Thank you for all of this, it's very helpful. I'm just wondering, I know we had had some questions about learning loss. I was hoping, could someone just give a very high-level idea of some of the ideas that we're thinking about for that $300,000?
Sure. So I'll maybe start with Dr. Ellen, if you want to start with a question, and I can come in a little bit behind with some other points.
Sure. So a couple of things, we wanted to get the gear going, to see what teachers were really seeing around that in the classrooms. One thing that's about to roll out, that is kind of our first phase of it, is students who are, doesn't even technically have to be in quarantine, but any student that is missing school because of anything related to COVID. So as we roll that out, that may be our foundation for what we're able to do for more students. Pam and I talk a lot about how to bridge that piece between people thinking that's a delivery of Special Ed services and support for Special Ed and EL, as well, because we want it available for all students. And then certainly, we want to continue, we found great success in what we did last summer, so thinking of extended year for that piece too, and then seeing what we have in terms of staff and student needs, and matching that up for extended day this year as well. We want to roll out first for students that are missing school, but then for a support for students from what, let's just call it the past 18 months.
Thank you.
Sure.
So in, in, also, just in terms of learning loss, and also contracted services, potentially tutoring, so that number is very flexible. So the good news is, we have not committed it to anything other than that category. And to Dr. Ellen's point, just to figure out really where kids are. I mean, we can agree that while the MCAS scores were not, not good across the state, they were not good across the state. And so that data point really isn't what we want to look at in terms of where we think kids are. So as the, our own assessments, from DIBELS to other assessments, roll out, and as teachers get a chance to do the observations, that we have a better sense. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Hopcroft.
I'll just ask, I just had a curiosity in the, and this is sort of a historical thing, so maybe it's, it's, I was curious. I noticed on the '21 change on Morocco, '21 to '22, just that it was 15%. And I was just curious what was driving, you know, the $400,000 delta, just because it seemed a lot bigger than the others.
I was hoping you wouldn't notice that. I can't answer that. I was surprised to see the same thing myself. I, I don't know whether, it's just, I'm not looking at Morocco. I don't know whether the budget was, had some anomalous entry in it that, that just caused it to be that way. I mean, there's no real explanation, because the staff didn't grow that much, you know?
Well, and the actuals are in line with the others.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, I was just curious.
I'm sorry that I can't answer that, but that, you know...
We'll track it down for the ninth, at the next meeting. Any other questions we can't answer?
Yeah.
I do want to just, as you know, last, last time we showed you enrollment, and as we know, we had quite a few students withdraw, and the question was, where did they go? So we've been able to spend, Andrew specifically, and I've been able to spend more time on that question, and this just kind of gives you a sense of where they landed. We have the detail on exactly where did they move. So moved out, and these are actual, these are actual numbers, these are actual student numbers. So as you can see in the red category, moved out means they moved, the families moved out of town. That is, there were 31 students at the high school level that that was true for. This is not inclusive of seniors, and so what you're looking at in terms of these numbers represents what would have been there last year, including students who returned coming into this year, which is that returned at SY22, but then these numbers are not rolled forward. So seniors are not in these data. Just to be, it's, it's a little funky, I understand, and we'll try to find another way to, to, to roll it forward, but it was the easiest, fastest way we could get a handle on it. We do know where the 30 private students, school students went to school. We do, and we obviously know the one home school. So the next task with this will be that we will really kind of track down to see, on the private side especially, we know where they went in general, to reach out to families and see whether that's a permanent placement, or whether they were concerned that we weren't going to open in a normal school year this year. We're hedging their bets, and, and see what their future intentions might be.
So can I ask a quick clarification, before you jump to the next slide? So I just want to be clear, this is only describing students who were at the high school last year, so this is not going to capture some of those kids who every year go private when they go from eighth to ninth. Those kids are going to be in your next bar?
Correct.
Got it.
Right there.
Same question.
Yep, great, thank you.
There you have it.
So McCall, you can see that what the numbers look like, those were largely eighth-grade numbers. So again, to your question, Mr. Nixon, that these are students that would have been in that school last year, who left, but inclusive of that in the orange are the 11 students who returned for this current school year. I will share with you some of the places that some of the families moved out to, where I was envious of, a lot of international move-outs, so they were not, they, they did it in a big way. And then you can see at the elementary across the board, again, these were students who would have been in our schools last year, and you can see the number of students who returned. Obviously, there's a bigger population of students that we're pulling from right here, but 38 students did return, 103 families moved out, and then 43 private.
And we've never looked at this data particularly in this way before, so we don't have a good sense of whether the moved out is a larger number than typically?
It is definitely a larger number, yeah. It's absolutely a larger number. The private placement's definitely a larger number. You know, again, I...
Private we've looked at, but, yeah.
Yes, right. And the, also, the number of students that moved out of eighth grade was higher than what you've seen before as well. I think that, you know, the question just is, and I think that this, the elementary level is, is the best place to start for us in this work, as I do think that some families may have, again, I mean, I know what it was where I was before, and we weren't, you know, people were not entirely trusting that we were going to come back to school full-time, right? So they wanted...
Right.
And private school registrations begin, that process begins earlier, generally in our kind of early springish, so families have got to start making decisions about whether they're going to try to register, make the payment, and make that commitment. So we will, over the next couple of months or so, continue to work on trying to get more data, reach outreach to families to see what the, what their plan is. So if the chair is okay with it, unless there are any other questions you'd like me to answer, or try to answer?
And Dr. Hackett, you should be sharing these slides to the school committee later.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I think it would be a smooth transition right into the personnel report, given that we've talked now about budget, we've talked about FTEs, we've talked about enrollment, and Ms. Kirby can roll us through where we are from a staffing standpoint.
Sure. So we've seen a lot of numbers, and hopefully we'll fill in some of the gaps of the whys behind it from our vantage point here. So just to pick up on where Jen left us last, thinking about lessons learned, we're looking at it from the staff perspective. I think a lesson that was just further ingrained, deepened, and was that sense of collaboration, we're all in this together, and the spirit of team and collaboration was something like I've never seen before last year. And as a result of that, we have many changes that happened in staffing, and that I have not seen since, you know, I have been in this role. And I, that idea that we had a whole group, a whole school basically, of remote learners last year at the elementary level, that brought teachers together, new teams formed, new professional relationships, and that just spread that consistency, that expertise, that passion for learning, and just that sense of, again, we're not alone. And that's a message that we can't say enough, overemphasize, and as we're hiring brand-new staff, again, ensuring that you are not alone, we are in this together. And last year, again, just formed these relationships, not just within a grade level at an individual school, but it was across the district at the elementary levels, grade levels, the support staff joining in with the general educators, to really create experiences for our students that were meaningful and relevant in this very, very chaotic time, and really working with families to give students what they needed. And then that extended across the elementary and the secondary. The idea that we took our meetings that were in-person, and we needed a half hour to travel, and we only had an hour and a half of meeting time, or an hour and 15 minutes, it cut into that time for really diving in deep and talking about teaching and learning. And it didn't allow for a secondary to get together with an elementary, because the schedules were just that much off. But this spirit of, you know, collaboration, the technology, has, has really turned that around. And when we think about social-emotional... And when we think about social emotional learning for our students, we've been really focusing on that as a leadership team. How do we work together? How are we committing um, ourselves? How are we present and coming together so that we feel like we're in a space where we can be collaborative, vulnerable, and take these risks that we expect of our students? So yesterday we met with our leadership team across the district, there are forty-eight um, members. And that includes the coaches, it includes all the building administrators. And the idea that, again, we have an hour and a half once a month and really using this time to talk about teaching and learning, talk about how we can best support our teachers, is really going to have a tremendous impact on our students' experience, pre-K through that twelve. And so we have, as you see here, um, many different reassignments. And as I said, I, you know, professional relationships were formed last year. And as a result, people moved from building so that they could now work with teachers they did last year. In the remote setting, we had VO joining Ambrose, we're joining Morocco. And there were openings across the district and people took the opportunity to, you know, uh, try something new, be part of a new community and really foster the relationships they began to grow last year. And then we had, it was very interesting this year, there were several teachers at the secondary level who decided that they wanted to try something new and they came down to the elementary level. And again, you think about that vertical experience, they know where they're going, we know where they're coming from. So it's a, you know, it's, it's a great um, relationship and there's a lot to be learned there um, from one another. And then um, we think about the many new hires that we had this year and we had a budget that we had to keep in mind. And I can't commend the hiring um, teams at each of the schools and at, at the district level for the work that they did to bring in the very best candidate, understanding that many of them are real, brand-new to the, you know, to teaching. And how can we best support them? And how do we instill what we believe? And how do we give them the support so that they know this is where we're going, but we're going to do it together? And um, we're continually looking at our mentor program and thinking about how we can use those supports that we now have in place because of the work that you've all done and the support that you've given. That layer of coaches and um, coordinators has made a tremendous difference. Before it was the building leaders and, you know, that, that was it. They were, and now we have coordinators at the elementary, secondary, coaches at the elementary and secondary who are able to get into the classrooms and support new teachers, model, work with, plan, design, and connect. Um, so that, again, there's this web out there, but everyone's seeing it and then that feeling of isolation. So that has been um, a, a major change in our mentor program, I'll go back to that. Um, they're inserting themselves into the monthly meetings and really making an inserted effort of how can we best use the limited amount of time that we have each month and give these teachers what they need? Allowing for voice and choice all throughout um, the experience of the new teachers. So there's constant uh, check-ins and how you doing and what do you need going forward? And as Peter said, nurses, um, we hired several nurses this year. And again, I have to um, give Jen Markham a tremendous amount of credit because we were competing with many other districts across the Commonwealth. And finding the right fit is so very important, again, in these times. It is about the relationships and we want people to feel comfortable and um, for staff and students to know that there's someone there that, you know, um, they have when they need them. So um, we added a COVID response coordinator um, this year. And um, by all accounts, that is really making a difference. It's taking some of the pressure off of the school nurses as far as that contact tracing, following up. They're still um, feeling very much um, overwhelmed and um, but they very much appreciate the additional support that's coming their way with the COVID coordinator and with the um, floating nurses that have been added. We had um, throughout the year, um, many um, staff that left and, um, you know, it was for a variety of reasons. Some retired as, as we celebrated at the beginning of this year, some moved. Seems like the music staff are the staff to keep an eye on because they're the people that stay with us for a while and then they're moving to uh, other locations across the country. And then we have those that are accepting positions closer to home. And they, we had several this year who took on leadership positions within the district and in other districts. And as always, we had um, those that had family needs and they needed to do what was best for them. And um, yeah, I feel like I'm rushing through, through here, but feel free to stop or interject. Um, and then uh, we talked a little bit about the vacant positions and Pam can certainly speak to this better. This year, there was a, there was a change. Typically, it's world language that we're chasing down. And Anna Toroni and her team are working hard to um, fill those positions. Great news is, this year we started with a full world language uh, staff. And what Anna is doing, thinking, you know, more forwardly and um, so that the district has more flexibility when we're thinking about our hires. Being more flexible in so much as what certifications do they have? Are they able to teach Spanish and French? So that when the needs change, we're able to follow the students um, with our staffing versus going out and hiring and having all of these point twos, point fours. We want staff that are with us as, and so that we can train and uh, work alongside. Um, so we're not constantly uh, retraining, reinventing. And um, also as we are thinking about the vacant positions that we do have open, we're really stopping and pausing and, and looking again to the future rather than just filling in the moment. So we're looking at the needs of the students, we're looking at the programs. And is this the best position to post for? Should we be thinking about other positions or taking these positions and adding and taking away um, to really make it what we need in that moment? And a perfect example of that was this year at McCall in Morocco. We had a social uh, adjustment counselor who worked specifically with the partnership program. The need was more a psychologist and we wanted that transition to be smoother from the elementary to the secondary. So that role now is the school psychologist. So we're going to take a look at that, see how that goes, was that the right decision to make or should we make tweaks along the way? And then again, in the middle school, we looked at a school adjustment counselor position that we had open and thinking about what the needs were and thinking about social emotional learning, that idea of embedding it into the day-to-day. And we have coaches at the elementary level, what does that look like at McCall? So the position that we hired is a little bit of both of that. So we have now a social uh, adjustment counselor who's getting into classrooms, who's offering PV. So that it is more interactive and integrated into the day-to-day practices at McCall. And then the great news is, we have many retirees that are coming back and helping us fill some of those gaps with the long-term subs. Um, and that's made a tremendous difference because it has been a challenge, to say the least, to fill some of these positions. School psychologist has been, we've posted, we've tried all different ways, different places. We've reached out to different uh, communities and it's, it's a challenge. We have the same issue with our point-five uh, integrated tech specialists that we have at Morocco. That's been open and as Jen alluded to before, the director's coordinators are stepping up. So Lynn Pledge, who took on this new role of innov, you know, coordinator of innovation, is over there and at Morocco, helping out in the classrooms, making sure teachers have what they need and then going off and doing the role she was hired to do this year. So again, that sense of collaboration is um, really um, something that we should all be proud of and really commend our educators for. Because in this year where we thought it was going to be a bit more normal, it's exhausting to think that here we are, we're still in the midst of a very serious situation. And people have, it's a challenge professionally and then there's that personal piece. But people are coming each day, putting their best foot forward. And when they can't, they know they've got a group out there that is ready and willing to support them in any and all ways. And I will just end with, um, in thinking about these leaves of absences. Your approval, your support of the additional building aid at the elementary and middle school has been remarkable. And they have really allowed us to fill the gaps and take a, not pull those ESPs that they are for a reason, those special ed uh, ESPs are attached to an IEP that has very specific goals for that student. So the more we're taking from that pool, we're taking away precious services. So these building aids have allowed us to limit that, but it's still being done because we have, we, we are where we are. So that's, that's my update and if you have any questions, I am happy to answer.
I would just add, if I might, um, some of the positions that you're seeing on here uh, might very well end up in uh, being funded by potentially ESSER, potentially by um, ARPA and potentially by FEMA. So the COVID response coordinator is currently Jess Pfefferman. Uh, we were fortunate enough to grab Jess for up and, well, actually I talked to her about, uh, maybe half an hour before this meeting. Um, she is getting ready to transition out. We are going to fill back in with a COVID response coordinator who has been working with Jess, who's transitioning with Jess. Uh, that position itself and several others that are not specific to, if they're specific to COVID response, then they do qualify potentially for FEMA funding and reimbursement. So we will be submitting another round of FEMA um, expenses to the town as we move forward. We are also working with the town to uh, find out of those FEMA expenses that we've already submitted last year. Uh, how are, is the reimbursement process going? As you know, uh, there were a lot of delays in that, uh, FEMA really struggling to process all that. Um, so that is starting to shake itself out now. So in our conversations, continuing conversations with the town about ARPA funding, we'll also be working on FEMA funding. Um, obviously a team approach, uh, and you know, Jess has been instrumental to helping us get this program, the test and stay and, and uh, even now into the surveillance testing, up and going. So the float nursing positions were also potentially, will make their way over to some kind of federal funding. What we knew is we were going to need to make sure that we had nurses going all the time. So um, these positions are being carried in the, in the general budget, the operating budget, but they may move out of the operating budget as we continue to learn more about what's available for federal funding. I will also just make a comment on the central office, um, central registration position. That, that became recently vacant as a result of uh, the, a person moving to a different position within the school system. And as uh, as Ms. Kirby already talked about, we do take every opportunity with every new position we have to think about, you know, is there, should we think differently about this position? Is there something else that we should be doing? So more than likely, we'll need to find some kind of uh, fill for the remainder of this year. But one of the things that we are working on um, is the potential to move to an online registration process, which will help to alleviate some um, of the work that a central registration office would handle. Uh, and then understanding that during the summertime, there may be, we may need to have some peak load help where we know a lot of the registrations obviously come in late spring into the summer. Um, and I believe of the last few weeks, we've only had about fourteen new registrations or so over the last three or four weeks. So it really does trail off during the course of the school year. That's not the only thing this position does. But I just wanted to uh, reemphasize the point that it is, we always do take the opportunity to really take a look and see if there's some other things that we, how we want to be thinking about the position, so.
Another question.
Are there any questions? Mr. Nixon.
So Lori, can you clarify for us, um, this information is as of when? First day of school, October one, and then can you be clear, you're comparing it back to what, last day of school?
Right, so June first uh, was that last report that I gave. And with the exception of central office, and I should have included that for all of you to see, but Frank's has been giving updates along the way. It's from that June first time.
So um, just a request, would maybe if you could put a footnote in there or something, so we have for the minutes, just so it's clear. You know, all these numbers are relative to some date in time, right? Um, and then just a, a casual observation, there have been years, and I'm thinking seven, eight, nine years ago, where we got similar reports, when you added up the number of reassignments in the district and new hires. We were well into the upper eighties, the mid nineties. And if you just add some of these numbers up on the left side of the chart, we're not there. I think we're in like the high sixties, the low seventies. It strikes me, it, my gut tells me this is a refreshingly like low number of, of turnover, given how chaotic a year we just had. And I'm happy to see such low numbers. Am I misreading this, Lori?
No, I think you're right. And I think a big difference is the leadership roles that we now have within the district. People are not leaving to go and take uh, you know, coordinator job here. We're growing our leaders and we are creating positions and they're staying. They, they want to be part of it.
Yeah, that's good news.
It's great news.
Thank you.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Just a couple of questions. Um, Ms. Kirby, when you were talking about the new hires, you alluded to um, that we had to keep within a budget. Um, are you finding that our budget for new hires, sort of as we think towards next year, is a large enough budget to attract the kind of staff that we're looking for? Is it challenging to hire in any particular areas, given the budget that we typically have for new hires? And knowing the competitive marketplace out there?
Great, so honestly, I, that, that's a, that's a hard question to answer. I think we're, we're pretty competitive. And I think it, again, it depends on the discipline that you're talking about. When you look at our elementary, we can put up a posting and within ten minutes, we have fifty to a hundred. We put up a posting for a math teacher at the high school. Again, over the past few years, I've seen that number rise. And that is, I think, as a result of our negotiations three years ago. Um, certainly, um, there are areas that are more challenging than others. And this year it definitely is school psychologists. And it seems to be true across the Commonwealth, it's not just here in Winchester. So I don't know what that is. And always, library media specialists are always a, a challenge. And then the math and sciences at the um, high school level.
And I imagine special education this year is a challenge as well.
It is. I was, you don't mind if I jump in?
Please.
I was laughing, I wore my pumpkin today for Halloween in honor of, you know, kind of trick or treat and thought that perhaps Karen and I should both come dressed as dollar signs. And you decide um, what you thought of our dollar signs. Because the personnel ties directly to the, the budget and kind of what's happening. The, this year in particular, the filling um, some of the leave of absence positions has been incredibly challenging for us. And what Lori has spoken about, particularly in regards to the school psychologists, is across the Commonwealth, um, across the state. If you have the ability, if you have a school psychologist certification and you have the ability to complete assessments within the timelines, you can pretty much name your price regardless of what the district has budgeted for. So you see this play out, the leave of absences or unfilled positions tied into the contracted services that now we have to contract out for some of the services in order to be compliant. And so we have um, several school psychologists who are on leave of absence. Um, we have, because of some transfers in Charlie, um, you know, that analogy, sometimes you've uh, you brought Peter to pay Paul, um, is, is happening. So we had an opening. So we had an opening, we've had some staff transfer into openings, which has been wonderful there, but has left holes elsewhere. And so that's exactly what we're seeing with the professional services have gone up, that line, because we also contract out at a greater, potentially a greater fee than what we would be looking at. And then secondly, we often owe compensatory services because positions have been unfilled for that time. And so there's always kind of a connection to this. So one of the things that has been happening frequently, our ESPs are, they have great experience and they have certifications, and so our turnover right now with our educational support professionals has been tremendous, because they are leaving to go to either positions that we have open or other districts have opened, and so the turnover has been just tremendous in some of those areas.
And I would add to that, they don't often know what they're signing up for. So they'll come on in, and it'll be a few weeks, and then they realize it's, it's not for them. So the, the amount of turnover at ESPs this year has really been astounding, and especially at the middle school level.
It's astounding. I don't think you and I have ever seen anything like this.
And I would say, Michelle, in answer to your question, I think if you ask the hiring teams at the, the schools, there was frustration this year, I won't lie. It, with the idea that we were at masters, masters five, if we, if we just stayed there. But people were coming in and they were, masters 60s maybe step five, masters 45 step five, that's a significant increase. So those conversations were difficult. In the end, I believe that, again, we've got what it takes to develop teachers. That's, that's who we are, that we really put a lot behind that. So it is hard initially to say, all right, I'm going to go with this, because the want is here. But again, I feel like we have a great group of staff out there, and to Chris's point, the turnover, when you look at the big picture, is relatively low. So I think we're on to something, and we know we can do better, and we work every day to do it.
Thank you. And my other question was just a clarification, because, and just based on the history we've had with our coaches and our coordinators, and you focus so beautifully on what they do for the staff, because this is a personnel update. But I also just wanted to reinforce that those teachers and staff are in classrooms working with kids. So I feel like that's such a value to our budget, because we're not only getting the professional development just in time in the classroom, where the teachers and kids can use it today. And so even our directors, I know, you know, a large portion of their time is still spent teaching and in classrooms.
Absolutely.
And I wanted to be clear that those just weren't administrators sitting in offices that you were talking about, that these are actually staff in our buildings working with our kids.
I'm glad you clarified. And it is making such a difference with that student experience, pre-K to 12. It truly is, it's providing consistency across the five elementary schools. And in the past couple of years with Jen's great work, really getting the coordinators at the elementary level, talking to the directors at the secondary level, those transitions don't feel as big anymore. And I think teachers are, know, again, where their support system is, they know conversations can be had, and then we respond with the professional development that needs to be. But that, that's, yes, that, that's why they're there, and they would hate to be in offices all day.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Brady.
Thank you for this report. I was just wondering, Chris alluded to it, and you spoke on it a little bit, in terms of the 32 new teachers, how does that kind of compare to previous years? Is it significantly smaller, or is it a little bit smaller? Can you just give us a sense of that?
Yeah, I would say, again, it varies, because we're comparing apples and oranges. So if I were looking at classroom teachers, it's significantly lower, especially at the elementary level. The transitions, turnover there was very low, there were many retirements. But the beautiful, if we're looking at the bright side of what we are going through, what we went through last year, we had the opportunity to have a year-long interview with many of staff members. So those at long-term staff moved into full-time positions. So I, that played in our favor, and I would say this year, there were more special ed support service openings as a result of people resigning and retiring. So we had more speech and language pathologists and school psychologists. So it kind of balances off. And I think at the secondary li, at level, the high school was pretty consistent. It was very few staff that they had to hire overall.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the modeling of collaboration and SEL and taking risks by our, for, this modeling that we're, that our staff and our administration and our instructional coaches are showing and demonstrating for our students. And I also just really appreciate the questions that you, Dr. Hackett, and Ms. Kirby, and Dr. Ellen Emma, and Ms. Gerard are asking yourselves about how we can make this work better. I think that's important for continuous improvement, and I think it's good that we're asking ourselves these hard questions about what we want to tweak and make better for the district going forward. So thank you. Okay, so, and, oh, one more thing, just also a thank you to Mr. Rowe for providing us a summary of the FY '22 budget, and we are looking forward to the, when you come back in a few weeks on other expenses. So thank you very much for the thoroughness and for working so tirelessly with Mr. Dinesio and with Dr. Hackett, so.
Thank you.
I know this sets the basis for our next budget cycle, and that is, it is upon us, so, appreciate it. Okay, and with that, it is 7:37, and we can move into action items. And we just have two left. We have a consideration of acceptance of a donation from the Massachusetts Elks Association. And, let us see, I will just open up the page. So the Winchester Elks Lodge provides us with a gift for special education support every year, and this year, the Elks has generously donated a gift of $700 for us and for Winpac.
Happy to make a motion.
Yes.
I move that we accept a gift from the Winchester Elks Association in the amount of $700 for special education support as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I just say?
I was just going to ask.
Oh, yes.
A thank you to the Elks every year, that's a very generous donation, and it was a surprise the other day to Peter and I, I guess I was not expecting it, and when Peter came back and said, you know, this is, I said, every year, they're very, very generous, so I just wanted to say a quick thank you.
Pam, I apologize if I cut you off, I didn't, didn't know if you were talking, sorry.
And Pam, I was just going to ask if you explain how that helps.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Top pack, real quick.
What we have done in the past with this donation is that it helps to fund the Winchester Special Education Parent Advisory Council's membership in the Federation Program of Special Needs, which is an organization that promotes parent advocacy and SPED PAC groups. It allows for different trainings, basic rates, and a whole host of different opportunities. I will share that pre-COVID, Michelle, Stacy, or Azzi and I had the very fortunate time for an attending the Apple Institute through the Federation, and it was truly one of the best conferences I have ever been to. And so when I, I, I very much thank the Elks for making this possible.
Thank you. That's marvelous to hear, so, how that support goes.
Michelle, I don't know if you feel the same way, but that was one of the interactive conferences.
Oh, and I think all of the members of the board who were able to attend that still talk about it and use the strategies that they've learned at that conference as well.
Thank you to the Elks for this annual donation. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you're listening.
Thank you.
So our next action item is for consideration of approval of minutes, and Dr. Hackett's administrative assistant, Ms. Erin Allen, has been working conservatively to catch up on the minutes. So we are bringing forward today the minutes from June 10th and July 12th and September 29th for your consideration and approval. And are there any comments or questions from the members?
Are you just going to move to approve the minutes from those dates as they are?
Second hit.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the vote is unanimous for the minutes. And next, we have the chair report. Let me just see, the, I have, the only item I have is that we have town meeting coming up beginning next week on November 1st, and our practice is usually that we have a pre-meeting for town meeting. So just in case we need to check in on anything at the last minute in preparation for town meeting. And I have arranged, I still need to submit this, actually, but the proposed time is for November 1st, which is Monday, in the Winchester High School in A101, which is the conference room that we had used previously for executive session, and it is at 6:00 PM. And the other item that I have is that we have the MAS C, the Massachusetts Association of School Committee, School Committees Meeting Annual Conference, and it is coming up. There is a virtual aspect to it, which will be on November 6th. I believe there is usually a business meeting in the morning, and then there is a voting session in the afternoon, if there is interest in that. And I believe we have to register by October 27th to participate in the voting section. Yes, Mr. Brady?
I was just wondering, on our pre-meeting before town meeting, is there any possibility that we could do that virtually, or some of us could do it virtually? Because then for the rest of town meeting, I'm, I'm just concerned about if people want to transition from to participate in town meeting versus.
I like where your head's at.
Yeah, me too.
Selfishly.
I, I would, I would propose that if, if possible, could we pivot and conduct that meeting virtually?
That is a good point.
Yep. Yay.
My head was stuck in, my head was stuck on in-person town meeting.
And, yeah, in-person, yeah.
And it has not been posted yet, so I will make that change to the agenda notice. Thank you for that. Good thing I brought it up. Good to have the check and balance. And now for Dr. Hackett's report.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items, I was, I felt honored yesterday to be asked by the MSBA to be what they called, and I didn't, now that I think about it, I'm not sure I am honored.
No, you're not.
An experienced, experienced superintendent around construction. That might have just meant old, I think, now that I think, reflecting on it, but I was able to join Paul Andrews from the Mass Superintendent Association, Jack McCarthy, who's the executive director of MSBA, and myself, and we were able to kind of talk about the process and talk about, I was able to talk about what we're doing here in Winchester, and a little bit of prior experience, and there were about 25 or so central offices and superintendents on the call. So it was a good session, it was, it was interesting to just kind of hear the questions that people are asking, and we talk about new people, there are a lot of new superintendents out there, too, who, you know, this stuff can, I remember well, feel pretty overwhelming. So it's great the MSBA does that and, and that the MAS S supports that. I continue to do school visits. I will be at VO in Morocco tomorrow, as well as Lynch on Thursday. So that has been good to get a day pass, to be able to leave this office for a little bit, and get out there and talk to, to see teachers and kids, but also to get a chance to have a one-on-one meeting and session with, with principals as well, as part of kind of the goal development process, which leads me to also mention to you that I will have a draft of my goals to you at your next meeting. I feel that I'm in a decent position now, that I kind of understand enough of what I think is important, and what I think I can potentially add value to, to the school department with, to be able to provide that to you, hopefully for some discussion then, but also hopefully at a future meeting also discuss. I know it's a little bit later in the process, but giving every, given everything that we've kind of had to, to manage from central office hires to just starting of the school year, I'd rather wait a little bit to make sure that I'm hopefully capturing what hopefully is important. So you can look forward to that, so, happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have future agenda items. Dr. Hackett has already alluded to goal setting and the superintendent's goals. We also have building projects and the facility updates. And I will note that we usually have an update on youth risk behavior survey results around November each year, and so I think we will expect to hear about that sometime in November. And are there any other suggestions from the committee?
Forgive me, have we actually voted a budget development calendar yet? I don't think we have. So that's something we typically look at in November, running out to a school committee vote in January, thinking about public session, excuse me, public hearing, and, you know, the snow date and so forth.
That said, we do have a public hearing that we had arranged in January, which I can't.
And I think we accounted for a couple of the dates already on the calendar.
Yes. And we had added a December.
Right, we just want it all in one spot.
You know what I'm talking about, right? It's a document that kind of outlines the process.
Okay.
Yeah.
And next meeting dates we have are November 1st for town meeting, we will make that virtual, November 9th at 6:00 PM for our regular meeting, and then November 23rd at 6:00 PM for our regular meeting. And, yes.
I just wanted to make a note, we, we did have a person who joined us here in person for part of our meeting, and I did note that they were raising their hand, and so if, if they happen to have joined us again, or just so folks know, if, if you come to our meeting and, and raise your hand, unfortunately, we're not able to take your questions then, but if, if you have questions, you can certainly email any one of us, call any one of us, or come to public comment if there's something that you want to say. So I just, I felt badly that we didn't really have an opportunity to address that person before they left, but just if they're listening and for anyone else, that, that's kind of how we do it procedurally, and I know that's not, that's always not known to everyone, so I just wanted to clarify that. And apologies to that person that we didn't get to have any conversation with them.
And I would just, if I could follow up on that also, for the remote session or the remote public comment section, we do state on the agenda that people need to register 24 hours ahead of the meeting so that we can process that. So just something else to keep in mind, along with showing up in person, too, for that section on the agenda.
We do have an executive session for this evening, and the committee will adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy related to collective bargaining and bargaining with non-union personnel, since to do so in open session would be detrimental to bargaining. I would accept a motion to move into executive session.
So moved, as stated.
What, was that a?
I was wondering if that was.
I think.
What was that? Oh, the smoke detector, okay. I need a, did?
I'm from the Midwest, Jen, I thought that was a tornado.
Yeah, we have a second from now.
Momentarily.
Off the phone, right, the alert, yeah?
Sorry.
So we have a second, and we need a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We can move to our executive session. We can move to our executive session.
I'll talk on my children before I do that.